Good evening. I will now call this board meeting for November 15th to order. If you could all stand and join us in the invocation and pledge. And if I could call Pastor Andy Whitaker from First United Methodist in Lakeland to do the invocation.
Do not spew this in the invocation.
Father, we humbly bow just to recognize that we are so grateful for life. All the energy in this room just to really pour into what matters most. And it's the kids that we serve so well. And help us as we serve them to be wise in our decisions tonight. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
If you would please stay standing, I'd ask Jordan Manning to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Not quite you, Jordan. How are you doing today?
Good.
Did you have a good Tuesday at school?
Yeah.
So where do you go to school?
I go to Barto Elementary Academy, the best elementary school in Polk County.
Oh, very nice. So you are 10 years old and what grade are you in?
I'm in fifth grade.
Fifth grade. So, and I hear that you're a safety patrol. What's your favorite part of being a safety patrol?
I guess just helping out the kids. Yeah.
That is awesome. So what is your favorite subject in school?
I like ELA and social studies.
Very nice. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Want to be a lawyer.
Very nice. There's a lot of reading in that, so I'm glad you like ELA. Awesome. Well, do you have any special guests with you this evening?
Well, I have the best principal and vice-principal of Polk County and my favorite person in the world, my mom.
Very nice. Well, thank you guys so much for bringing Jordan. Jordan, thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. We appreciate you and hope you have a great rest of the week at school and some great Thanksgiving break next week.
Thank you.
All right. And our first order of business will be to accept the agenda for the school board meeting for this evening. I'll hear a motion to accept the agenda for the November 15th school board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Hyde for special recognitions.
Madam Chair, members of the board, staff, and community members, thank you for being here this evening. We had Jordan Manning, and so I'd like to now recognize Armandale High School, who's here to sing the National Anthem in commemoration of Veterans Day. I'd like to ask school board member Lori Cunningham to please step down for special recognitions immediately following.
Beautiful job.
I don't have anything to read for Lori. At this time, I'd like to ask Lori Allen, Senior Director, to come forward for the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Recognition.
Hello, thank you. So, we have a lot of people we want to recognize tonight. Our schools in the past year for '21-'22 piled up the PBIS awards. So we had a total of 42 Polk County Public Schools that earned the Model School Status for this past year. The good news is that more than ever, we've had seven of the 42 that got Platinum Award, and we have two that have won Gold. So to give you an idea of what that is, the PBIS initiative promotes good behavior, student success, positive safe environments, all through a multi-tiered system that is implemented at the school level. Our model schools use PBIS practices at a very high level to meet the discipline goals, serving as examples for other schools. We want to publicly recognize our nine schools, the principals, the school-based point of contacts for their hard work and follow-through, and building successful systems at the school level. So, I would also, before we get started, I want to introduce my team. They're going to help pass out the awards that we've made for them. Charles Morrison, Kristen Hewlett, Mandy Seanrock, and Lydia Taylor, Heather Catriss, and Lydia Taylor, who is not here with us tonight, she is out ill. So, I'm going to call, name the schools and the people who are here to represent them. So we're going to start with our gold awards. Brigham Academy, and tonight we have Lynn Boland and Lori May, Principal and Assistant Principal.
I don't feel enough joy.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. Congratulations.
And Charles, you and I are proud of you.
Let's make the pitch make the day.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what they said.
That's your slogan.
Okay.
Our second gold recipient is Louis Anna Woodbury, Anna Woodbury Lewis Elementary. Never say that right. And Mr. Wise is awesome because he recognized that these are the ladies that did the job last year. Beth Wilken, who was the AP, and Leslie Belcher, who was the counselor. All right, so let's talk about our Platinum winners. Our first Platinum winner is Cumbi Academy of Design and Engineering, Principal Tammy Farins, and Behavior Interventionist Michelle Styren. All right, our next recipient is Griffin Elementary, Principal BJ Stinson, and Point of Contact Behavior Interventionist Danielle Brown. All right, next we have Lake Alfred Elementary, Principal Matt Burkett, and Point of Contact Jennifer Crowley-Brown, who's also the dean. Next is Lincoln Academy, Lincoln Avenue Academy, Principal Antoinette Kirby, and Point of Contact Casey Wills, who's also the AP. So next we have Loughman Oaks Elementary, Principal Sarah Stokert, and Point of Contact Arnetta Hunter, the AP. Next is Southwest Elementary with Principal Julie Sloan, and Point of Contact and Counselor Kelly Leonard. And last, but certainly not least, is Juanita Elementary with Principal Nilda Caraballo, and Point of Contact Maria Schmidt, who's a counselor. And I said it right?
Yes, you did.
So the last thing that I wanted to say is that we haven't done this in the past, but we know how very hard it has been through COVID and everything else we've been through the last two years, and the fact that we have higher numbers than we've ever had before. This is a real testament to what these ladies and gentlemen have been doing on their school campuses, because this is outside and beyond of what they have to do every single day. And the last thing we went to is acknowledge is that Polytech, the students at Polytech created these awards for us. We told them what we wanted and they designed them for us. Yeah, so thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask John Miller, Curriculum Specialist from the Office of Acceleration and Innovation, to please come forward for the Presidential Scholars Recognition.
Do you need help? Do you need help? Good evening. Thank you Superintendent Hyde and school board members and district staff for this opportunity. I know this is a packed room, but appreciate the opportunity to recognize some of our academically outstanding high school seniors tonight, so thank you. As part of the United States Department of Education Presidential Scholars Program, each state department of education is asked to select a limited number of current high school seniors from that state to receive this national recognition. In September, the Florida Department of Education sends us a memorandum of the guidelines describing the state process for selecting the Presidential Scholars from Florida. According to the guidelines, each state was to select only, or each district, was to select only two seniors to be the state nominees from that district. Along with several other criteria, one student was to be selected based largely on high academic achievement, which includes SAT or ACT assessments, and one student was to be selected based largely on academic achievements in career technical education. In Polk County, we asked all the high school leadership staff to select the one to two students from their school that they felt were most worthy of consideration at the district level. High schools submitted names to the district in late September. We received 39 names of students from our schools. A committee of district curriculum staff reviewed the submissions and academic histories of the applicants to determine the two names that we would provide to the Florida Department of Education. I want to thank the school administrators, who are super busy with all that they do, for their time. There was, I think, a hurricane at that time, too, for them to get us names and go through that process. And also the district staff that helped us review all of the submissions. We greatly appreciate this opportunity to publicly recognize all 39 students and the fact that leadership staff at their school specifically identified them. So congratulations to all these students. At this time, we'd like to call this 39 district finalist to the front to receive their certificate. We are not going to stand for a group photo. We did that before the meeting because there's not enough space. But if you could, audience, hold your applause until we go through everybody, and then I will announce the two nominees who will be representing Polk County. So the students will be coming in behind me. From Summerlin Academy in the area of CTE, Benjamin Alfaro. From Davenport High School in the area of CTE, Alexis Anstat. From Kathleen Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Kiara RC. From George Jenkins Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Teagan Baker. From Barto IB in the area of Academics and Assessment, James Berrios. I don't think he's here tonight. From Harrison School of the Arts in the area of Academics and Assessment, Susan Elizabeth Braswell. From Polk Virtual School in the area of Academics and Assessment, Darcy Brooks. From Haynes City Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Skylar Ryan Cabrera. From Lake Region Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Alexander Cannon. From Haynes City IB in the area of Academics and Assessment, Sim Noel de Jesus. From Kathleen Senior in the area of CTE, Jensen Dix. From Lake Gibson Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Tavion Dujay. From Frostproof Middle Senior in the area of CTE, Autumn Ellis. From Tennerock High School in the area of Academics and Assessment, Arlie Freyas. From Mulberry Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Trent Hare. From George Jenkins Senior in the area of CTE, Kylie Hess. From McKeel Academy in the area of Academics and Assessment, Evan Tyler Ho. From Tennerock High School in the area of CTE, Caleb Hudson. From Davenport High School in the area of Academics and Assessment, Colin Hughes. From Fort Meade Middle Senior in the area of CTE, Gracie Johnson. From Haynes City IB in the area of Academics and Assessment, Payson Keown. From Auburndale Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Megan Knowles. From Summerlin Academy in the area of Academics and Assessment, Jaden Looney. From Frostproof Middle Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Morgan Lucky. From Lakeland High School in the area of CTE, Colin Mank. From Auburndale Senior in the area of CTE, Tessa Mullis. From Fort Meade Middle Senior in the area of CTE, Dakota Newsom. From Barto IB in the area of CTE, Samantha Patty. From Winter Haven Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Juan I. Rodriguez. From Harrison School of the Arts in the area of CTE, Barbara Rosenkrantz. From Barto Senior in the area of CTE, Jamie Deanne Rulo. From McKeel Academy in the area of CTE, Joshua Daniel Santiago. From Haynes City Senior in the area of CTE, David Joseph Scruggs. From Mulberry Senior in the area of Academics and Assessment, Ryland Stenick. From Polk Virtual School in the area of Academics and Assessment, Mackenzie Thomas. From Lake Gibson Senior in the area of CTE, Belin Valdivietso. From Lakeland High School in the area of Academics and Acceleration, Academics and Assessment, Colin J Wyatt. From Gauze Academy in the area of CTE, Victoria Youngblood. And from Lake Region Senior in the area of CTE, Delma Zarate Chavez. I want to thank the audience for your patience in getting through all these students and Ms. Cunningham for your help and the photographer. If we could give all these students a round of applause. It's very difficult, and again, we take the names off of the students when we give it to the district staff. We have a student that's, the two names that I'm about to announce do not include a student with a 1540 SAT score and does not include a student going to a naval academy. So we can't, we can only send two to the state, but I appreciate, I know this took a while, the opportunity to recognize all these students. But the two state nominees who will be representing Polk County are Colin J Wyatt from Lakeland High School in the area of Academics and Belin Valdivietso from Lake Gibson High School in the area of CTE. Thank you.
Are they not with us this evening?
They, they may have. Did Belin step out? She was so excited, I pronounced her name correctly.
If we could get both of them back, please, have them come back up front, please. They deserve that recognition.
There we go. I don't know, can I read a little bit of your bio that's on your certificate?
Congratulations to both of you, outstanding job.
One of them is a National Merit semifinalist, Colin, and one of them, I don't have the paper in front of me, but we're CKG, CKG, EKG, and a medical whiz and has a lot of industry certifications already. I think that's, that's on the certificate that they have that I don't have there. Congratulations.
We'll let the room turn for a second, and then we have one last recognition for this evening. Ms. Wyatt, Chair, at this time, I'd like to recognize you. I know that you have two remaining special recognitions for this evening.
I do, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank a couple of our colleagues that will be, this is their last board meeting. They have contributed so much to the board over the past several years. Ms. Fortney, who can't be with us this evening, but she's served for the past four years, and then Dr. Wilson, who is with us this evening, thank you for all of your service for the past eight years. We have a lovely plaque for you in commemoration. We did not get a clock because Ms. Miller said you didn't need any more clocks, so you can take that up with her. But presented to Lynn Wilson, school board member, in grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding service and devotion to the children and citizens of Polk County, 2014 to 2022, so.
Smile big now.
He can hold it. And we have one from Ms. Fortney as well, and we'll make sure we get that to her. And that concludes my special recognition.
Members of the board community, that concludes special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you Superintendent Hyde. Next is public comments for items on the agenda to be voted upon as adopted at the start of this meeting. Before we begin, I would like to welcome the public and go over our public comment process and opportunities for this evening. We have three opportunities. The first will be for items on this evening's agenda to be voted upon. The second will be during our public hearing portion of the agenda for public hearing topics. And at the end of the meeting, we will have an additional opportunity for public comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. To register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The clock will give you a warning sound when you have one minute left and when you have 30 seconds left. Please give your name for the record. All comments should be directed to myself as the board chair. As a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts and comments. This is not a question and answer session. However, if you are seeking additional information, I encourage you to contact any of us or the superintendent's office outside of board meetings, and we'll be happy to, happy to have deeper conversations. Before we begin, the on-deck line is just behind the podium, so I'll call who's next up to speak and then who's on deck. So if you want to make your way to the on-deck line, that way we can move through a little quicker. So I have, for the public comments on agenda items, Emmett Purvis. And I believe all the others are for policies for the agenda items.
But prior to coming into this room, I talked to another individual, and he explained a lot of the things that I was going to discuss tonight. But what I would like to do in this time is talk about those people in the school board that come to work every day, they do their job, they're unsung heroes. And I know this because my daughter is a product of Polk County Schools and Barto High School, and she's a high school math teacher. So I can talk with some authority for what they go through. But what I'm concerned about is the grade levels that Polk County is not achieving. Why? Is it money? Is it motivation? Or is it leadership? Nobody's going to answer?
As I stated, this is not a question and answer session.
I'm well aware of that, ma'am. But there's one other thing that's in my craw tonight, and that's a proposal to extend the superintendent's time period as superintendent of Polk County Schools. As far as I'm concerned, nobody on this board deserves a raise. We just went through an election. But things are going to change, and that's why he wants this raise, and he knows it, and he's padding his future, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to confirm, there is, A, no superintendent's contract on the agenda tonight, but B, the superintendent's contract proposal from the work session does not include a raise because he has been very public about not wanting a raise. Thank you. Next on our agenda will be the approval of minutes. The first set of minutes is from October 25th, 2022, and I will hear a motion and a second. Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be the approval of the minutes for the October 25th, 2022 work session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Wilson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. The next item on our agenda will be the approval of the consent agenda. And I'll hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Superintendent Hyde, would you like to introduce us to some new administrators?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I would. At this time, these are new administrators, so if they are in the audience, and if they are joined by family, loved ones, or significant others, we ask that they please recognize them as well, because behind every great leader is an incredible team of support, and that starts with their family and their loved ones. At this time, I'd like to introduce Charles Davis, Senior Legislative Assistant from the Florida Senate. He is our newly hired staff attorney. Mr. Davis, you're welcome to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I have with me tonight some of my legislative family. My family's not here to watch me from home, but back here, I have Renee Wilkes, Representative of Stanbauer's office, Rachel Barnes, who is my colleague in Senator Stargell's office. She'll now be working for Representative Jennifer Kennedy, Denise DeBeau, who is also my colleague in Senator Stargell's office, and she'll be working for Senator Colleen Burton, and Karen Whaley from Senator Ben Albritton's office. I really appreciate you being here. Thank you so much for your support. And I just want to say, what an exciting opportunity. I've gotten to know most of you, actually, all of you. I've worked with you over the last eight years on education, and I look forward to continuing to support public education, our students, our families, and our teachers and staff in this new role. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can come up and take a photo.
Come on, ladies.
She's already working. Ciao, Ms. Dodge. Thank you, sir. Mr. Joshua Macklemore, Senior Coordinator for Facilities and Planning, has been promoted to Director of Planning. And following his marathon presentation at the workshop. Congratulations.
First off, I would like to, first off, thank my wife and our daughter for allowing me to continue to move into this role. Again, thank you to Ms. Usher and the superintendent. I definitely look forward to continuing to work forward, working together with the board as we try to come to more innovative solutions to the challenges that we're going to have tomorrow. So thank you again.
Congratulations. Next is Hamilton Abreu, Operations Manager for Countryside Mall, is the newly hired Senior Director for Facilities and Operations.
I want to thank Ms. Usher for giving me the opportunity. I feel honored to be able to join the team, and thank you. I hope to work with everyone here, and look forward to it.
Thank you, sir. We have a handful of administrative transitions or administrative moves. Leslie Clay, Assistant Principal at Stanbaum Middle, is transferring to now be the Assistant Principal over DJJ with Specialized Student Services. They here? Okay. Karen Phillips, Dean of Students at Crystal Lake Middle, has been promoted to Assistant Principal Level Two at Stanbaum Middle School. Please join me in congratulating both of them. Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes administrative changes or administrative appointments.
Thank you Superintendent Hyde. Next is our action agenda, and we have one item on the action agenda, and that is our 2023 Polk County Public Schools Legislative Platform. And I will hear a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I am so sorry. Still getting used to the technology. Ms. Fields, your mic is hot now.
I just wanted to commend Ms. Dodge for doing such a great job presenting the platform and the format and everything. I think it's going to serve us well, so I just wanted to make sure that she was acknowledged.
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Miller.
I just want to agree, go along with that. We have in the past had a much smaller platform, but I like the way this time it's divided up into sections, so you can see what's affecting the global, the students in the state, as well as local, and I think that's a much more effective way to help lobby for that. So I appreciate that, Wendy, wherever you are.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And next on our agenda will be, we will open the public hearing. I'm sorry, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And now we will open our public hearing. So we will start with comments for items on the public hearing for those, for those who have registered. Just as before, speakers will be given three minutes. The clock will give you a warning sound when you have one minute left and when you have 30 seconds left. We will now begin with, our first speaker is Deborah Bublitz, and on deck will be Robert Goodman.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Bublitz, and I'm a longtime citizen of Polk County, over 20 years. I'm here to voice my concerns for the recent revision change that the Polk County School Board has made to Policy 2417, which is the Comprehensive Health Education. Board has made to Policy 2417, which is the comprehensive health education. Abstinence as the expected standard. But first, just so you know, this isn't my first time at a meeting, although it's my first time to speak. I have attended several of them over the past year. But admittedly, before 2022, I've been assuming that the school board has been making decisions in the best interest of the children and was listening to both sides of the issues with respect and fairness. But I deeply regret that I've been making that inaccurate assumption. I've come to the realization that I need to pay closer attention to all of you and your decisions, and it speaks to your character when you disregard the opposing viewpoints that are coming from your community. Apparently, over the last few years of policy changes, the school board has seemingly been dismissive of the majority of opposing comments from the public, and there seems to be a strong push, encouraged by the school board, to sexualize children in the school system. It doesn't seem to matter that voices in the community are trying to reach out to you about how you are changing our children's state of mind with these choices. I'm very concerned about the future generations of our children. Due to these drastic policy changes, will they be exploited and abused or have respect for themselves and humanity? I feel, as do many other citizens in the community, and I have talked to several, that education is important when teaching impressionable minds. Young children are already getting exposed to sexual content when listening to music and watching TV. Also, the internet, of course, is full of this kind of illicit behavior, and it's quite easy for them to access it and be exploited. We've heard of that many times. Abstinence has many strong benefits, like eliminating teen pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases. It should remain written in the policy. Removing this language from the policy would make it easy to overlook somehow. We want to make sure that teaching abstinence is not forgotten about or for it only to be mentioned as a last resort instead of the expected standard. Sexual abstinence as part of the educational method should be left in the policy, not just the curriculum. We want to make sure that the Polk County School Board, as well as the instructors who are teaching this topic, have an appropriate standard to meet in the policy towards abstinence, and that everyone is held accountable for this content. So I urge you to keep abstinence in the policy as well as the curriculum. So I thank you for your time and for giving me the opportunity to comment, and you'll probably be seeing me again from now on. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll have Robert Goodman, and on deck is, I believe it's Virgil William? When you're ready, Robert.
Hello, I'm Robert Goodman from Lakeland. Tonight, the board is being asked to consolidate the language of Policy 9130 and move it all to Policy 2522. As written, 2522 is in violation of the Florida State Statute 1006-283, Sections 2B and 8D, that states a parent of a public school student or a resident of the county has input regarding materials in classrooms, libraries, and schools. Words matter, and in the language of 2522 that states for a challenge, it says that it must be made by a parent of a student in the district and a resident of the county. That is against state violation, that is against state policy. Any resident or parent can review and challenge library books, curriculum, whether in book form or on one-to-one devices. 2522 as written would exclude parents of children who do not reside in the same county as their child. A great example of this would be a parent who lives in Osceola, whose student goes to school in Polk County. This is also a violation of HB 1557, the Parental Bill of Rights. Any taxpayer or resident can have input to the curriculum in schools. Also, in the policy as written, 2522 states in Clause G that appeals may be made within 15, and then in parentheses, or it says 30, and then in parentheses says 15 days. It can't be both, so the policy contradicts itself. On September 6th, CCDF filed an appeal to challenge the opt-in, opt-out switch that was done in violation of public school policy, which would have required you to take a public vote. This appeal was used following 9130. This change would not have any effect on that because 9130 was the law of the land when we filed the appeal. It would be in the board's best interest to hold the move to 2522 until the language that violates State Statute 1006-283 is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Virgil, I think the last name is William, Babson Park.
When you get to be 83, you have to do things different. My name is Virgil Ollum, and it's a real honor to stand before you this evening. Thank you. I'm here to deliver, to address the issues of Policy Number 9130, 2522, and 2417. Fundamentally, these policies deal with the issue of pornography. The decision before you is what is best for the students? What is the most loving decision you can make for our students? Our founders helps us answer this question. In the Declaration of Independence, we read, "We hold these truths to be self-evident," that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And when your rights come from God, that's a moral pursuit of happiness. America was built on a strong, strong families, strong marriages. Porn is destructive. Porn should not be any place in our schools. It is immoral to take taxpayer money and use it for anything that's immoral. God clearly forbids adultery and fornication. Abstinence is the best policy. Abstinence helps prevent unwanted pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases. Many sexually transmitted diseases are difficult or impossible to treat. God tells us to love Him and to love one another. Porn is not love. Porn promotes destructive sexual practice. Thanksgiving is next week. We can be thankful to God for marriage, thankful for God's creation of sex. Children are wonderful. God's ways are wonderful. Next month, we will celebrate Christmas. We will celebrate Jesus' birth, Jesus who came because He loves us. We need a Savior. His ways are good. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comments, we will vote on each of the policies before us.
Madam Chair, if I may provide some clarification, however, you stated a few times that abstinence from now is included from the policy. That's incorrect. Abstinence is stated as the expectation on page one of two item, or line item 7C, or excuse me, 7B, for students in grades seven through, excuse me, it's 7D, or C and D, for students in grades six through 12, and awareness of the benefits of sexual abstinence as the expected standard, and subsequently consequences for teenage pregnancy. So it is contained within policy moving forward. It was not stricken from the policy.
Thank you.
It was moved from, correct, because we're consolidating policies, but it was not stricken from its totality from policy, and I think that was one of the expressed concerns from the initial speaker this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Allen, are these, can we do them when we talk about the specific motion about the specific policies? Thank you. So the first policy is Policy Number 2215, Program of Instruction. And I'll seek a motion to approve.
Move approval?
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as the superintendent indicated, that is a concern of mine. Abstinence is, in teaching, abstinence is a concern of mine. And again, would just like to reiterate, although it was stricken from 2215, it was added to 2417, so it's still a part of our policy. And I appreciate the superintendent clarifying that. So I'll be voting for this policy change. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be Policy 2410, School Health Services. And I'll seek a motion to approve. Ms. Miller and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be Policy 2417, Comprehensive Health Education, and I will seek a motion to approve.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Wilson, any discussion? Dr. Allen.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that as well. Again, the abstinence did move to letter D on that. And an important thing to remember as well in regards to this policy as it relates to our sexual reproduction curriculum, as noted in that policy, it says the board shall annually approve all instructional materials used to teach reproductive health or any disease, including HIV and AIDS, in an open, noticed, public meeting. So I really appreciate that. And we listened very acutely as we heard from our public as it related to this rotation of curricular changes, and I think our staff did a great job on that. But again, this is something that will come to us annually and then accessible and open to the public. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Ms. Fields?
I was basically going to say what Dr. Allen said, but I also wanted to have Superintendent Hyde to kind of give a very brief summarization of the input from the community.
So especially last school year, we had concerns as it related to the inclusion of topics that were not outlined specifically in statute, or excuse me, in the core curriculum by the state of Florida. One of those, if you recall, was HIV/AIDS education in grades three and four. So we did strike those. We ensured that all of our curriculum was realigned. This summer, there was, we reconvened the committee inclusive of local health experts, the Health Department and others, as well as our own curriculum teams, to completely review and revise and address any lingering or remaining concerns that may have been, or areas where we may not have been fully compliant with the state requirements for benchmarks and standards. So at this point, we are, and I'm pleased with this. And what you're seeing here, a lot of these, this is cleanup. We're moving things to where it's more appropriate, so they're not stated in one area but then missing in another. And so that's really what you're seeing here as a reaction to that or the way we adjust to ensure. But again, with the reassurance to everyone that throughout the policies, especially those that pertain to human growth and development, or sexual education or health education, it clearly also states that we will be compliant with Florida statutes that does list those statutes. So we constantly review that curriculum to make sure we're in alignment with state expectations. Just to clarify one last time, school districts do not create the Human Growth and Development curriculum. The state of Florida adopts that curriculum and then mandates that the school districts to infuse within their instructional day. And so that's what we follow. And I think we have been very responsive to date, especially in this regard, and we allowed public review, we took a lot of public comment. And in fact, if I recall correctly, we had numerous people come to the podium and praise us for the work and the collaboration that we demonstrated as a result.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll have Policy Numbers 1213, 3213, and 4213, Student Supervision and Welfare. And I'll hear a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And the motion carries. Motion to approve the Policy Numbers 1590, 3590, and 4590. Personnel files.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll look at Policy 5335, Care of Students with Chronic Health Conditions.
Move to approve.
Ms. Miller and Dr. Wilson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next is motion to approve Policy 5780, Students' Parents' Rights.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Miller and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll look at Policy 6233, District Budget.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Motion to approve Policy 6661, Instructional Material, sorry, I'll hear a motion to approve Policy 6661, Instructional Material Allocation.
Move approval?
Second.
Dr. Wilson and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next is new policy Number 6700.01, Overtime Pay During Emergencies.
Move that we approve, 6700.01?
Second.
Dr. Allen and Ms. Cunningham, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify for the community, because this is a new policy, notwithstanding, this is a requirement of FEMA. So anytime we are going to seek reimbursement for our employees who have to work overtime post-storm in order to get our schools prepared and ready to accept students and staff, we have to have a policy on the books that allows us to do that, and that's a FEMA requirement, and it's one of the reasons why during a previous storm, number of years ago, we were not fully reimbursed for overtime charges because we did not have this policy on the books and approved. So that's the purpose and the impetus behind this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Mr. Bridges?
And one step further, having the policy is not a guarantee that we will be reimbursed for that overtime. If we do not have it, that is a guarantee that we will not be reimbursed. So a very wise move.
Thank you.
Good point.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
We're waiting for a signifier.
Sorry. Motion to, the next one will be our inter-local agreements, Policy 8100.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Miller and Dr. Wilson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be Policy 8141, Mandatory Reporting of Misconduct.
Move to approve.
Ms. Miller and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Policy Number 8405, School Safety and Security.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Policy Number Policy number 8407.
Move approval.
Safe School Officers. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Dr. Allen and Ms. Cunningham? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And last, but certainly not least, Policy 8420, Emergency Management, Emergency Preparedness, and Emergency Response Agencies.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And we will now close the public hearing and reopen the school board meeting. And we will now go to our Superintendent's report. Superintendent Hyde?
Madam Chair, the next board meeting will be held on November 22, 2022. The board meeting will begin at 9:00 a.m. This meeting will be held at the district office located here at 1915 South Floral Avenue in Barto. It is a special meeting that will focus on swearing in our board members, our newly elected board members, or reelected board members.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde.
And if I may clarify, one last time, I, Mr., I did not, for the record, ask the board for a contract extension. It was something the board volunteered. Nor, when the board offered a salary increase, I deferred that increase, asked if there was a mechanism for us to actually have that funding donated to the Polk Education Foundation to be used for student scholarships. We were not able to successfully find a mechanism, thank you to the IRS, that would facilitate that transference, so I declined any pay raise. So contrary to what you heard earlier today, I can assure you there is no feathering of my nest. I believe that I make a fair salary. I work, I work hard and diligently to improve outcomes. I think our academic track record this year shows that. I think my evaluation and the comments by the board reflects that. I seek to continue to serve our community and our students. But I can assure you, I'm far more altruistic than that. And I am not seeking additional compensation in any form. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just to confirm, if you win the lottery, you're still donating that back?
I will donate my salary for student scholarships. Yes, ma'am.
Just got to make sure that one's on the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we'll go to our attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items for the board tonight. Both of these are proposed settlements of lawsuits. The first one is a proposed settlement in the case of Richard Arzillo versus the School Board of Polk County, Florida, which is a federal case, case number 821CV1070WFJAEP. And the recommended action is a motion to approve the proposed settlement agreement in the case of Richard Arzillo versus the School Board of Polk County, Florida, and to authorize the Chair, the Superintendent, and the General Counsel to execute any and all related documents to effectuate the settlement and release of the claim.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. And I will hear a motion for the settlement and release agreement between Richard Arzillo and the School Board of Polk County, Florida.
Move approval.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Wilson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. The second matter is Brandy Blanchard versus the School Board of Polk County, Florida, which is a 10th Judicial Circuit case, Florida case number 2019CA001818. And the recommended action is motion to approve the proposed settlement agreement in the case of Brandy Blanchard versus the School Board of Polk County, Florida, and authorize the Chair, Superintendent, and General Counsel to execute any and all related documents to effectuate the settlement and release of the claim.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. And I'll now hear a motion to approve the settlement and release agreement between Brandy Blanchard and the School Board of Polk County. Dr. Wilson and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. That is all I have. I would like to wish all of you and everyone out there the very best wishes for Thanksgiving. I wish you joy of the season.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Matthews, any report today? Thank you, Ms. Matthews. And we will start with District One for Board Members' Reports. So Dr. Allen.
We know that education is probably one of the strongest pillars of hope in our community, and I will always hold to that. And so my comments just really relate to all these things that contribute to that pillar within our community, and I'll try to keep it quick. Had a chance to participate in the Junior Achievement Golf Tournament. If you don't know anything about a junior achievement, it's a very foundational organization. It's a national organization. We've got some great things happening with Junior Achievement at Polk County. I can say, I played in a golf scramble with two high school students. And I can say that I did not contribute one stroke at all to that scramble because these two high school players, man, they knocked it out of the park. And one of them was our superintendent's son, and he was an incredible young man to play along with and really helped us sustain. We actually took third place in that tournament. And he earned, I don't know if he's going to share that with you, but he earned a $50 gift card to a steakhouse. So, oh, he did.
You did not just rat him out.
I did.
Was that a $100 gift?
What kind of steak would you get? That's the question. So Marissa Green, I just want to say thank you as well. She organized the Teacher of the Year and School Related Employee of the Year banquet. You know, it's been a couple of years on that banquet, and it was an opportunity for us to get together and to honor those from the past. And we look forward to December, an opportunity to honor those for this year. And if you really want to see some really fun video footage, go watch some video of Dr. Wilson, I think Lori Cunningham as well. They're just getting crazy on this like 360 camera that's spinning around this, this, man, it looked fun. Mr. Central Florida, I was really disappointed Superintendent Hyde was, was feeling a little under the weather that night because I wanted to see him strut on the catwalk for Mr. Central Florida. He was considered the GOAT. That little campaign that they did was, was quite awesome. But I just want to say thanks for raising some dollars for Mr. Central Florida as well. A really good friend of mine as well, Brian Stevens, wanted to give him a shout out for taking part in that event. Last weekend, went out to Harrison. They had an amazing performance, Mary Poppins. And this is high caliber entertainment for us in Polk County. If you have not had a chance to go visit Harrison School of the Arts and take in one of their productions, it's incredible. So I just wanted to say thanks to Harrison for putting on an amazing performance. And then dittoing that idea of the arts, we did have a ribbon cutting at Polk Museum of the Art and of the arts at Florida Southern College. Wanted to say thanks to Superintendent Hyde for being present at that ribbon cutting as they look to expand. And that is a great thing for our county. If you have not been to the Polk Museum of Art, it's an incredible establishment. And again, that really connects with our vision of shaping the whole student. And the arts, very critical to that. And then lastly, wanted to shout out to Crystal Lake Elementary. And if you don't know much about what's going on at Crystal Lake Elementary, this, this school's been doing some amazing things over the last couple of years and reshaping what they're doing there. But they're basically celebrating a major milestone that's just taken place. And if you're not familiar, UCF has certified them as an official community partnership school. There's really only 14 of these in the state, and we have one right here in Polk County. And basically, Crystal Lake Elementary was selected to host the first community partnership school program in Polk back in 2017. And now working through that process to officially be certified with UCF. And the school basically offers students, their families, and surrounding neighborhood access to a variety of education, healthcare, and social service resources. So just wanted to say thanks to the staff and the teachers at that, and our community partners doing some great work there at Crystal Lake Elementary. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen, and Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items as well. I want to give a shout out to the Early Learning Coalition of Polk County. I attended a wonderful evening, their gala, Fifth Annual Gala, and it was fabulous. And it was such a, such a wonderful opportunity to provide funding for what they do in our schools. Well, I shouldn't say our schools, what they do for our schools because they truly work with our youngest children in the county and provide opportunities to them to learn prior to actually coming onboard into school. They sponsored a video a few years back that was absolutely life-changing for so many. And so I have a warm place in my heart for Ms. Debbie Burdette, Dr. Huteck, and the whole team there at the Early Learning Coalition. So I just want to say thank you for all that you do, and we're so excited to continue to be a partner with you. Additionally, I attended, at Davenport School of the Arts, The Lion, The Witch, and The Wardrobe. And it was fabulous. Kudos to Mr. Mosenberg and Mrs. Kane and the whole production team for an outstanding job with that production. From costumes to lighting to the set, it was just fabulous. Those kids are so talented. It's hard to believe the children, quite frankly, are in middle school. And the cast was great. We really enjoyed a fun evening there. And just, it continues to be one of our crown jewels in our county. Additionally, I attended Mary Poppins at Harrison School for the Arts on a different day than you, but it was fabulous. I want to extend a congratulations to Principal Levine. I know Ms. Colley was the director. Mr. Flights was music. Just great, great talent as we move forward. Those kids are unbelievably talented. And sometimes you just want to pinch yourself and say, really? Am I at a high school? Or am I someplace in a Broadway theater watching these children perform? So they just did an outstanding job. So kudos to everyone involved at Harrison as well. And I would like to say, I would like to finish with this. Dr. Wilson, congratulations on your retirement from Polk County School Board. You have admirably shown your servant leadership throughout your tenure. It has been a pleasure working with you and learning from your business acumen and your accounting knowledge. My colleagues and I have totally enjoyed your wonderful sense of humor and your ability to offer a calming perspective during complex discussions. Dr. Wilson, thank you for your faithful service. Even through COVID, you showed up to all our meetings. For the past eight years, many blessings for God's continued grace upon you and your beautiful family. My family and I wish you the very best as you begin this new chapter in your life. It's been a pleasure, and best wishes as you start a new chapter in your life. And that. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Fields?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I wanted to thank Nick and Mo's for the Community Appreciation Day that they did this past Saturday. They have a program that's called Eight Spirit Pumps. And when we pump gas from their business, proceeds go back to certain elementary and middle schools in North Lakeland. And those schools would be Sleepy Hill Middle, Sleepy Hill Elementary, and then Kiss Pack, Griffin Elementary, and Kathleen Middle. I wasn't able to attend. I'm not sure Ms. Miller might have. I don't know how much money each of the schools received, but I'm sure that whatever they received was a blessing, and will be a blessing for them and their students. And I wanted to congratulate Chad Davis. I'm very excited about Chad coming on staff. And I think that he's going to really do good works for us. And I wanted to thank Mr. Wilson for his service on the school board, eight years. And your ability to continue, sometimes probably when you didn't want to, is admirable, and we hope and pray that you will enjoy your next path, whatever that might be. And we wish you and your family the very best. And I also wanted to send out a message to Ms. Fortney. She's not here tonight, but I could not leave the meeting without thanking her. When Ms. Fortney first came on the school board, she and I were on the opposite end of the spectrum. And I think over the last four years, we have come together. And at the end of the day, we might not always have agreed, but I know in my heart that she was all about what was best for the students. And so I'm going to miss her, and I wish her the very best in whatever she pursues in the very near future. And God bless her and her family. And then I want to congratulate all of the 39 Presidential Scholars that were recognized tonight. That is just amazing, what we're doing. Some folks say we're not teaching our kids anything. Some people say that our educational system is dumbed down. Well, I have to say they are not aware, or they weren't present, or they weren't watching to see what we have before us. I'm very proud of the work that our teachers and our staff do each and every day, and the families and the students. So congratulations to them and to many, many more that were not recognized here tonight. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And next, I will go to Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's probably never a good idea to provide an open mic to an elected official who's on their way out and who's an accountant. And in my case, someone who doesn't have any prepared remarks. That's never a good thing. You know, elected officials can be rather verbose at times, and accountants can be rather dry at times. So that's probably not a good combination, but I'll be brief, as brief as possible. It has been an incredible honor and privilege to serve this community as a school board member. You know, I think that the, from my perspective, the one thing that I would ask of an elected official is that, number one, they listen, that we listen to all of the interested parties in any particular matter, do our homework, and then make a decision that is in the best interest of our constituents. And I hope that that is my legacy. I hope that folks will say, you know, he listened, he paid attention to us, he went out and did his homework, and then he made a decision that was in the best interest of our school district. And that meant putting students first all the time. I want to say thank you to my colleagues on the board. I have had the privilege of serving with remarkable colleagues over the years. And, and you know, we've not always agreed, but we've always found a path forward. You know, we've always found a way to build a consensus and, and get things done. This is a big ship. I mean, it's one of the biggest school districts in the country. It is a, it's a monster to move, and it doesn't happen overnight. And I know that frustrates teachers, and it frustrates students, and parents, and constituents, and staff members because they want something done. They want it done today, right? And it, it takes time to get things done. But I think we see a ship that's moving, and it's moving in the right direction. And I'm very proud of that, and proud of the folks I've worked with. And I know you all will agree with me that we have an exceptional Superintendent here. And so this goes out to our new school board members. I hope you will realize that and make sure that we keep him on board for many years to come. I want to say thank you to the staff here in the school district. It's a tough job when you're a staff member and you, you get a call or you get a request from a school board member. I've been in that position. I've worked in organizations as a staff member when a school, when a board member, not a school board member, but a board member would reach out to me. It's a tough position to be in, you know? Sometimes they're just asking questions. Sometimes they're trying to influence and exert influence, right? And, and so it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult situation. But I want to say this, all of the staff here, during my time here, have always been professional and responsive. And in my case, I always endeavor just to ask questions, just trying to find answers so that I can make the best possible decision. And they, they've always, in every case, responded to me. You know, they responded quickly and, and were always exceptionally professional. I think that says a lot about our school district. And last, I'd like to talk about my doctorate just for a moment. You know, we do, and when I talk about K-12 education, I'm not just talking about here in Polk County. I'm talking County, I'm talking about nationally. We do a remarkable job of educating those students, and I refer to them as our, our traditional college-bound students. Um, it's incredible. I mean, I have a daughter that went through this system, has a PhD from the University of Florida, is doing some incredible things. Ms. Cunningham has a daughter who is just, just doing some remarkable things, and she's a product of this school district as well. But we fall well short, quite honestly and frankly, on an international basis with those students who, who are not, who are non-traditional, college-bound students. I refer to them as at-risk students. But uh, and, and that's, and that was my dissertation, by the way. It was interesting because I'm a business major. My dissertation is in business administration, and I tried to find an institution that would let me work on that particular issue. I found one uh in Indiana, and they were rather progressive, and they said, no, you know, you're a business major, this is a business program, you can't, you can't write a dissertation on K through twelve education. But I said, what if I do it? What if I address it through, through funding and budget? And they said, okay. I mean, if you can tie it to funding and budget, we'll, we'll go with that. And they were kind enough to let me work on that. And we, we have a lot of work to do. We, we really need a pathway for those students who, who are not traditional college-bound students. And I, I think we want to push everyone towards college, and not everyone wants to go to college. Not everyone is interested in that. So that's my passion, and I'm going to continue to work on that. And what that means is, I say all that to say this, although I'll be leaving the school board, I'm still going to be involved in education. And, and so I hope each of you know that you can reach out to me anytime. You have my number, and if you need help with some research on something or if you need, if you need someone to advocate for something you're doing, um I'll be here. I, I came here in, in, to Winter Haven in nineteen seventy-five on a baseball scholarship. At the time, it was Polk Community College, and I fell in love with this area, and I've been here since. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm sure that I'll spend the rest of my time here uh in, in Polk County. So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be around, and I'm gonna do everything I can to continue support K through twelve education. So please, and this offer goes to superintendent as well, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Anything I can do to help, I'll be here to do so. So with that, I'll simply close by saying it's been an honor and a privilege, and thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And Ms. Miller, I'll let you follow that.
That's a tough one to follow. I'll start with um, I'll start with recognizing Mr. Wilson and our relationship. He was, as I've said this before, he was my accounting professor, and I knew very quickly that was not the field I was gonna be in. And when I started to run for office, I was clearly embarrassed that the, the class I had to drop because I was not good at it was my colleagues. Um, but, um, and on the campaign trail, Mr. Wilson has always been a professional who has dealt with people with that open heart of listening and transparency. And I used to tell him, I need to be more like Lynn Wilson. Um, Lynn was the calming voice in sometimes what is chaotic, um even in the community and on the board. So I appreciate all you've done, Mr. Wilson, and what you've taught me along the way, even though it wasn't accounting because it wasn't my thing. Um, and I will be one of the people reaching out. And now that you're not on the board, we can talk a lot more. So it's even better. Um, I will recognize Ms. Fortney, which is another leader who I, when I say led with her heart, I have never met someone so giving of their selves and their soul to the, to the students of Polk County. We could be anywhere. We could be in Tallahassee. People would come out of the offices and say, that's Ms. Fortney, she taught me, or she taught my cousin. Literally someone who suffered for people. Like, if a teacher had an issue or a student had an issue, she took it home with her. And I, and I watched that in awe because that's difficult to do in advocacy and being in leadership. So the work she's done here will not, will be missed. Um, you can tell that she crossed the lines of every political spectrum when you see the margin of that race less than one percent. People knew she was transparent and she was authentic. You know, they say people, good leaders lead with, I said this earlier, with a compass in their head and a magnet in their heart, and that was Fortney. And so, and I appreciate Mary, the fact that Mary, what she had to deal with through this last campaign. I want to thank them for, for not giving up and, and staying connected to this district and being an influence because I think they're, they're great people, and I, I was so honored to work. I had not known Ms. Fortney. I joked with her, I went to the school across the tracks. She taught at the Fancy Denison, and I went to Westwood, and back in the day, that was our rival. Um, so I didn't get to meet her till I was an adult, but when I would name a friend, she would tell me where they sat in her classroom because that's how much she paid attention to students. So um I want to, I want to thank her for the time she spent here. And I'll say real quickly, yes, um Nick and Mo's, which is a ga, you think is just a gas station on the north side, if you fancy southsiders want to drive down to visit us way out in the country, you'll learn that it's a community store. They care about their community. You're not a number, you're a person. They call you by name when you walk in, and they do a phenomenal give back to the community on their Community Appreciation Day. And I want to thank Kylieya Carswell, our community liaison that helped connect the schools to that organization. I, I wasn't there for the check presentation, so I'm not sure, but I know our schools, our principals were pumping gas. You know, I, I drive up and Sheila Gregory is on a gas pump. Um, it was really about making those relationships with our community and, and benefiting from that. So I appreciate what they were doing. I did ten of both shows that were already recognized here, my first show at Davenport School of the Arts, and I was so um in awe of those kids. And I can tell you, Harrison, I've sat in many Broadway shows, and when I can tell you Harrison puts on something that is, you would see in New York, so, you know, not only was Mary Poppins flying across the stage, they had um one of the characters upside down tap dancing as he flew across the stage, which I've never seen. Um, our kids are very talented, and we have multiple programs across the district. What we're doing here, you know, you don't get to hear about that. If you don't have kids in our district, or you don't visit our schools, you never volunteer, you might only, you know, hear things on social media or maybe in the press, and you don't know what we're really doing here. So I invite everyone to get involved because our kids are amazing. They will amaze you, not only in academics, but what they're doing on their, on their own time. So um that's all I have, Madam Chair, but thanks for letting me go on further than I should have, probably.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Um, I have some, just some brief comments. I've gotten two opportunities in the past week to spend all day with students, which if you know me, that's my favorite thing in the world. Um, so on Election Day, Randy Roberts Foundation hosted their community classroom. So they started with congressional classroom. Um, Congressman Putnam's office used to do it, and when he um left office, they took it over. So they've been doing it. This was their thirteenth class. Um, but they realized very quickly, we take these kids to DC, but they don't really understand how the community is affecting them locally. Um, so they recently started a community classroom. They got to hear from community advocates, from um mayors, from city government, all Polk, Commissioner Martha Santiago, um so all levels of government locally, just to, to understand how that affects them. Sometimes more than, than what's happening in DC or Tallahassee because if your water doesn't come on or your trash doesn't go out, it starts to pile up. Um, but so it was a great time just to spend, spend the day with students um and really learn the, the issues that they see in our classrooms. Um, you know, I often tell the story of the sporks. Um, and one of the students texts me afterwards, and he's like, hey, who do we, if we, we have an issue at our school, who's the first person we should report it to? Um, so I apologize to Ryan Van because I'm pretty sure he's coming, coming to talk to you. Um, but that's important. When students see something, learning who they should go to to talk about it, to make sure that, that the adults realize that it's an issue. Um, and then yesterday, I got to spend the day with our youth leadership Winter Haven class and just hearing what they want to be when they grow up, um and just the different opportunities, seeing, we had a student that had never been kayaking before, um that got to go out with our natural resources team, and he's like, you can do this for a living? You can actually go out and explore our lakes and, and learn about what the quality is, and there's somebody who does that? Um, was just really exciting to see our students engaged in the local community. I know that you guys are sick of me talking about lip-sync battle, but we just finished, and I know you want to know how it went. Um, so we raised thirty-nine thousand dollars for, thirty-nine thousand and one dollar for the Public Education Partnership of Winter Haven. Um, Superintendent Hyde was one of our judges, um and we already have a date for next year. So mark your calendars for twenty twenty-three. It will be on November ninth at Normio Hall. Superintendent Hyde and I, they may both be making appearances because it is the last one, so they're bringing back all of the old contestants for a Battle of the Champions. So we look forward to seeing you then. Our goal is to raise the most money ever. So we look forward.
The term is veteran.
Veteran, sorry, not, not the old contestants, the veteran contestants, those of us that have done our time. And, and then just, I want to highlight real quick, we have two Winter Haven alumni that are doing great things. Um, so the first is Trey Mancini, is a Winter Haven graduate and just won his first World Series on the Astros. Um, you may have, if you watched the games, you may have seen his catch in game five. Um, so I just want to give a shout out to Trey. And then also, Winter Haven graduate T. Michael Stavers was named the Winter Haven City Manager last night, effective in December. Um, so very proud of our Polk County public school products that are going on to do great things. And lastly, I just want to make a couple of comments about some of our colleagues. Um, but more than anything to say that this board, especially the past two years, has truly been a joy to work on. Um, we may not always agree, we often disagree, but it has been very collegial. And even when we're having our worst days, I know that everyone that, that sits at this dais truly is out there for kids. So thank you, Mr. Wilson, for always putting the students first, um and Ms. Fortney as well. I know she couldn't be here this evening, but just kind of echoing a little bit of what Ms. Miller said, um it's amazing to be in Tallahassee, and she can look at somebody across the hall and say, that kid, he was in this year in this class, he sat between Johnny and Sue, oh, it's Chad. She knows every student she's ever taught, um and truly loves all of those kids. And so just thank you for her years of service as well. Yes, and Mr. Wilson would like to request a short break, so we will be back in five minutes um to conclude with public comments. And so this meeting will recess for five minutes.
Hello, I'm Fred Hyde Superintendent for Polk County Public Schools. And we have some exciting news about a big change coming to our schools that will help improve learning for our students. This year, Polk County Public Schools will be providing each student with an internet-accessible device. The district was recently awarded a $28 million federal grant, which along with other funding is making this a reality. Providing a device to each student, our one-to-one technology initiative, is a very important step for our community. We live in a digital age. To best prepare our students for success in the classroom and beyond, we must provide them with convenient access to technology and help them understand how to use it safely and effectively. Our educators will also be able to develop engaging lessons that take advantage of these devices and maximize instructional time. Using these digital tools, teachers can identify student-specific areas of need and assign the appropriate resources to assist them. Keep in mind that these devices are not the only way that students will be learning. They will still be reading books and participating in traditional classroom activities. Younger students in elementary schools will be issued iPads, and older students at the middle and high schools will have laptops. All students will be able to take their devices home to continue in learning outside of the normal school day. Before taking the devices home, students will first learn how to be responsible for them and maintain them. We will also provide information to parents and guardians about proper care of the devices and options for accessing the internet from their home. We will be releasing more information in the coming weeks. Please continue to look for updates on our website, polkschoolsfl.com. Your child's school will also share important updates on this initiative throughout the school year. Thank you.
The pilot season of the Polk County Public Schools Esports League has come to a close with a fantastic championship tournament. Six high school teams battled it out in a single-elimination bracket, vying to be the first PCPS esports champion.
Open shot.
Gibson gets the goal.
In the end, it was Frostproof Middle-Senior that took the top prize, beating Ridge Community High in overtime.
Frostproof hitting it to the net. What a finish by Frostproof to win the championship.
I mean, I'm shaking right now. It's crazy. We've been working all year for this, and we finally made it.
To find out more about our Esports League, visit polkschoolsfl.com/esports. It's early morning at Union Academy, but that doesn't slow down the Bluegrass Band as they serenade the gathering crowd in the cafeteria. They are all here to celebrate this man, J.J. Corbin, one of the first Black paratroopers in World War II, and longtime teacher, coach, and school board member at Polk County Public Schools. In honor of his years of service, Union Academy is naming their media center after Mr. Corbin.
We have a very unique setting here at Union Academy, and it's only based in our history. With Mr. Corbin being here today and us naming the media center after Mr. Corbin specifically, we're putting his name on the building to represent that history.
I want to thank all of my friends who are here for this honor, and I look back and wonder, do I deserve it? I hope that I've lived the kind of life that this honor could be in my name.
To find out more about the dedication, check out our news story at polkschoolsfl.com/news.
All right, we will now call this school board meeting back to order, and we will start with our public comments for the non-agenda items. Just as before, to register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The clock will give you a warning sound when you have one minute left and when you have 30 seconds left. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no immediate action will be taken on items presented during this public comment portion of the meeting. If follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting in accordance with school board policy. So first will be Octavio Hernandez, and on deck will be Megan Lester.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Yes, I'm everywhere. My name is Octavio Hernandez, I'm a teacher at Evanford High School. Thank you very much for having me back. And I just want to say thank you. Last time we were here, you guys were so receptive to our students. I don't think you understand, the energy that they took back, man, all of a sudden, other kids are coming. We have other kids coming, involving their parents, and that's what it's about. And I just want to say thank you for being so receptive and positive, because too many times, I feel like it's just aggression and people are just coming here to complain. But coming here with the positivity and you guys were so receptive of it, thank you so much, and I just appreciate that. Tonight, we have two of our students, Megan Lester and Elias Aponte, so they're going to be speaking. Now, they came up with some ideas. This is what we do at the club. You know, we come up with solutions, but I tell them, "You know what? Now go research it and find a way to do it. Find a way to solve the problem that we're having, whatever it may be. Don't just sit there and complain, don't just look at everything's wrong. Your homework tonight is everyone's going to go home and try to find a solution. Research how everything is, because you guys can do everything." And believe it or not, some of these kids come up with some great ideas. And just to give you a quick example, the Wi-Fi issues at our school, you know, some kids want to get the Wi-Fi password, and every week, you know, we get a new one because somehow they get it. But, you know, one of the students came up to me, like, "Mr. Hernandez, why don't they just give us our own password that has a firewall? That way, we can still use it and use it at the school, and that way, we stop complaining, because the kids always find a way. They're very, very smart." But that's the kind of things, they're looking for solutions to the problems that we're having. And, you know, because you guys were so receptive, I honestly, I appreciate it, because it has made other students come forward, students that normally wouldn't be as engaged, and they're now doing it. And that kind of energy is just fueling me to keep going forward, and that's why I feel you see me everywhere, because I'm just trying to be a good role model for my students. So, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Octavio. Next will be Megan Lester, and on deck is Elias Aponte. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon, nice to see you all again. I am Megan Lester from GSA, Gender Student Alliance. The bus transportation is dangerous for the students, not just at my school, but all over Polk County. The students are often squished together. The law for a safe drive is two students a seat, but we have two to four students a seat. Due to this, the students are prone to getting hurt. Overcrowding is a huge issue on that point. Students get home around 4:00 PM the latest, or even later, depending on their bus. The buses have to do two rounds, which brings the kids home late. That makes the kids hungry, hot, and tired. That affects physical and mental health. In the year 2035, it is supposedly the time for all vehicles to be electric. Buses spend at least $4,000 on gas a year. Take that and multiply it by the hundreds of buses in Polk County. If we use that money towards building electric buses, that would give us bigger and better buses, that would result in less students in harm. The money can go towards bus drivers' pay as well. Bigger pay gives us more bus drivers. The issue of limited space on the buses will only get worse the more time we wait to solve the transportation bus issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. And next is going to be Elias Aponte, and on deck is Ree McKinney.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Elias Aponte, and I'm the president of Nuestras Vozes Americanas, or Our American Voices. Polk County, all of, 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 of high schools and middle schools have 20 to 30 minute lunches, and they need longer lunches. Research shows that longer lunches helps kids' mental and physical health. They have to scarf down the food without even digesting the food. And that will result in the body lowering the metabolism, keeping more nutrients, and thus overweight. It, it, it gives, it also gives time for the students to have social interactions and not have constant instructional time. It also gives time for the lunch workers, time to prepare for the next lunch. They get so overwhelmed that they rush to get the food out without even checking if it's cooked. They need time, they need time to prepare and check the food to see if it's good and cooked. A solution to this is to make lunch a class period. It would give the students time to do what they want for the period. They can go to the library, do homework, and socialize with other kids. That is all, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. You guys are both great public speakers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. McKinney, and then on deck is Bernard Wells.
Good evening. I'm Ree McKinney, retired from the schoolhouse in 2008, but I didn't retire from education. I'm still involved, I still serve. I want to thank the board and Superintendent Hyde, Attorney Bridges. Some of you I've known a long time, some of you I've known a short file. But all of you are to be thanked for your commitment and dedication to the students of Polk County and to the employees that make education happen. Your task is tremendous asset for all that are involved with our students. The last few years have been tough with COVID and all that it entailed for our students. And you have continually demonstrated patience with those attendees, some of whom were not from our county, and some who demonstrated a lack of civility. But your actions spoke louder than their words. Thank you. To Lynn Wilson. Lynn, as you leave the board, a special thanks for your many contributions. But I especially want to thank you for the work you did on the referendum. It was a tough sell, but you sold it beautifully, and we all benefit from that. Thank you, and God bless you, and thank you for not retiring from education just from this board. And to Sarah Fortney, I'm going to talk to the empty chair. A special thank you for coming to the board straight from the classroom. You brought with you a total commitment to students, our students, and you demonstrated so many years in the schoolhouse that commitment. It is a great loss for all of our students and our staff that you will no longer serve on this board. I have known you for your entire career in Polk County Schools. And I am sure you will find ways to stay involved and continue to serve. Again, I thank each of you for your dedicated service.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Next is Bernard Wells, and on deck is Pam Luce.
Good evening to each of you. My name is Bernard Wells, and I just have a couple of concerns. One, to say that it was good to hear the superintendent say that he did not, that he rejected his raise, but he did not ask for an extension, that it was the board's decision to do that. My question to the board would be, what within less than two years can you put your fingers on that the superintendent has accomplished? Even if he has instituted some policy, a change of any kind, within a year and a half, has that been enough time to see the fruits of that labor? Have that time been qualified to see any of that? My guess is not because of time, okay? So, I would ask that. Two, with the extension, with less than two years on the job, would you afford any other school-based personnel debt offer? Would you extend their contract after only a little over a year, maybe a year and a half on the job? Would you extend them their contract? There is a lot of talk within the community about jobs and positions, teacher shortages, particularly within the ESE department. The thought that I give to that is, the talk is, there is a number of ESE positions that potentially are going to be cut. With that shortage, how can it be justified? Since the superintendent has been in this position, Superintendent Hyde has been in this position, what I can see from the outside looking in has been of a great concern that it seemed like the district is becoming top-heavy. It seems as if there is a large amount of neptunism that has taken place under the superintendent's toolage, meaning that with positions that were vacant or positions that were created at a top level, which means they get top salary, in a couple of years, the district is going to have back problems because they are so top-heavy, they're going to be leaning forward. That's an issue, especially when it comes to teachers' raises. The other thing is, when you put people... That's my time.
Your time, yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Next will be Pam Luce, and on deck is Jeremy Knowles.
And the interlocal agreement. First of all, last week, there was an item on the agenda that had a contract on the, attached to the item for the property on Hatchet Hall Road, the Baxter property. After I sent an email to all of you to try to inform you of the site selection committee, and the public contacted you, suddenly that agenda item disappeared, and there was a PowerPoint on there. I've downloaded both, so I have that. Developer donations are usually contracted for impact fee credits. I have yet to see one in my years here where ever a developer actually donated. If that's the case here, wonderful, that's great. It was also said that donated sites don't have to be taken to the site selection committee. Section 3A9 of the interlocal agreement says negotiated sites or donated sites must meet the basic criteria for any site considered and shall be considered generally feasible by the school board staff prior to further review and inclusion in the site selection process. And then it goes on about an expedited process, but it all involves our community partners, our county, and our cities in doing this, and we're neglecting that when we don't do it. I cannot tell you whether the site selection committee referenced by Ms. Usher that she tried to do is real, but I can tell you that when I attempted to schedule any of them, I was told that it was no one's business what property the school board purchased. There were three other school sites purchased or donated for impact fee credits with no site selection committee. But the site selection committee is just a tip of the iceberg. I have evidence that the interlocal agreement is not being followed, period, especially in the area of concurrency. Evidence I took first to Ms. Usher, and then to Mr. Hyde on September 10th, 2021, and then to Mr. Bridges in a three-inch binder on November 9th, 2021, and discussed it with them and showed them that evidence. I'm so disappointed that there seems to be a circling of the wagons here, even after I've attempted to reach out to you. And thank you, Dr. Allen, for bringing up and having a discussion about it, and I do hope you do a presentation about the interlocal agreement and find out what your responsibilities really are. I tried to let you know about this problem without making it a public spectacle, but only one board member reached out to me to ask questions.
Thank you, Ms. Luce. Jeremy Knowles, and on deck is Thomas Gill.
On Hatchet Hall Road. A brief overview of why I am here tonight. After the September 6th board meeting adjourned, our group met with Superintendent Hyde to discuss alternate sites for the proposed high school to accommodate the overcrowding of Hank City High School, which was discussed earlier that day in the work session. From this discussion, Mr. Hyde agreed that him and staff would review alternate sites that we brought forward to them. We spent countless hours researching property, making phone calls, emailing, and even using personal contacts with landowners to gather properties that we seen desirable for a new high school in that area. On October 10th, we submitted the three properties. Two of the properties were considered not desirable. They were referred to as the Hinson Avenue properties. They were out too close to the Hank City High School now, I guess. But the third property, the Lorenz property, the owner or the estate attorney for the owner were never, never received a phone call, email, nothing, no type of contact. And I confirmed that earlier this week with them. And this land is available, but as I stated, the staff never contacted them to discuss anything with this property. Earlier today, it was mentioned that that property may have sand skeeks on it, and it may. But the thing is, it's highly unlikely, because it's in active citrus grove right now, so that's highly unlikely. And another thing was a road issue with it. It's on a clay road, so it's basically a ground zero to do whatever you would like to do as far as turning lanes, access, any of that type of stuff. So, I believe this property should be reconsidered, because like I said, it is a So I believe this property should be reconsidered, because like I said, it is available, but no one's reached out to the landowners. Second, the Smokey Grove property that was mentioned, there was so much misinformation on that property. There was 80 acres, it said, available. There's 144 acres available. This site is already permitted to be built on with houses. Also, it was considered a packaged sewer plant. That's not true. It's a full operational septic plant that can be used for the school and accommodated. Again, the due diligence was not...
Thank you, sir. Thomas Gill, and on deck is Glenn Lawhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to point out an article written in 2006 by Tom Palmer. And the reason I'm pointing this out is if the school is built on the Baxter property, that lays the groundwork for his, I believe, 3,000-home development. And the same thing was attempted to be done in 2006, and it was stopped. Because it is next to a state park, the county planners also recommended it to be stopped because the traffic would overwhelm the surrounding rural urban roads. If you go down the two-lane Hatchenhall Road, there isn't room for 6,000 cars. It's not possible. Your school would give him the power to do that, and that would be very bad, because there is no infrastructure for that in that area. And another issue I would like to point out is the fact that that school, if it was built there, it's on the edge of the county line. If you walk much further through that cow pasture where it's going to be built, you're in Osceola County. You're on the very end of the county line, so instead of being able to bring students in from 360 degrees, you'd only be able to bring them in from a narrow plane. I feel that this school is being built just to benefit the Baxter development and a future Fire Tower development, because where it is, its location is not ideal for anything else. It is near Pointiana. Other than that, most of those kids go to Osceola County. And due to the fact that it was originally supposed to be purchased for $12 million, and it is now a donation, should raise a red flag, as Mr. Allen has pointed out, because he would be getting a tax break from that and possibly some mitigation credits. That is not something we need at Lake Hatchenhall, and that is not something we need in general. You should be able to take that school somewhere else to the land that we've proposed to you. And at the Fire Tower meeting, Mr. Hyde said specifically that he is open to new proposals and would research them. Any of the land that has been proposed to him has not been followed up on. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, we will have Mr. Glenn Lawhorn.
I'm last?
You are last. But not least, we save the best for last.
I don't know about that. I'm Glenn Lawhorn. I live in Hain City, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak for y'all tonight. We're part of a very large group. Mr. Hyde has been out and met with us individually at FFA Center, knows our concerns, and knows that we're dead serious about our concerns. And in our area out there, we don't want our world changed, and that's what's going to happen if we do this. You're going to turn our world completely upside down, not for just a little while, forever, and it's not going to get any better, ever. Now, one of the things that I researched was the roads. We talked about that. There's no plans anywhere at all. I have a letter from the county road administrator that says there's no plans whatsoever for any improvements to Hatchenhall Road in the next five years, no budget plans. So unless y'all got money heading out somewhere to change the roads out there, that's going to be a big concern. But I digress. We're really concerned more about the impact that it's going to have on our lives and everybody's lives that live out there. It's going to be a very dangerous road. It's already bad now. I know the county is coming in and trying to put a new road at Sand Hill Elementary. I'm not real pleased about how that's working, but we'll see. The environmental hazard that's going to come from this is bad. What is that noise? The environmental hazards that's going to happen is bad. It's going to affect Lake Hatchenhall in a very negative way, and once you start that gear rolling, it's never going to stop, and it's just going to march right on through, all through the Bowlin properties and everything down Fire Tower Road, and, you know, we're just surrounded. So we're here to fight back and tell you that we don't want this out there. There's many other possible sites that we can do. I know I spoke to a couple of landowners today, and I will talk to Mr. Hyde about that. But there are other properties that are available for less money and that already have infrastructure in place. So I hope that you will keep in mind that we don't want our lives changed out there. You know, I'm all about the students finding somewhere to put them in school, but if we're going to re-district for Hain City High School and possibly Pointiana or Liberty, whatever's out there, that needs to go further up into Pointiana. That's what I think. Let me know your thoughts. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. With no further business to come before the board, I want to give one last big thank you to both Dr. Wilson and Mrs. Fortney for their years of service. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting.